We're already five minutes into this meeting, so.
That's okay. We're good.
Thanks, Kelly.
So, where was I in my train of thought?
You gave this to Mike.
Oh, yes. So, I've prepared all of this and I gave it to the Budget Committee for them to look at, and he sent me an email yesterday and said that he does not believe that they're going to be holding another hearing, so they're gonna go forward with their recommendations at their meeting tomorrow night, which is why it's important that we
Right.
look at everything. So, the first thing that I want to start with is probably, I guess we can go with the revenues. The revenues that were proposed to you on December 18th have not changed through this whole process. The estimated revenues are $2,567,970. So, I think we're all in agreement that those are good for offsetting the operating budget as proposed.
Yep, okay.
The next document that I provided them with was the default budget, which is essentially last year's approved operating budget, and there were a few adjustments that were made. We had a one-time purchase for the supervisor's checklist for laptop for $1,200. So, that gets taken out, and then we will also be reducing our long-term debt because we're on a final payment this year, so our interest reduces in half, so that reduces the default budget as well.
Okay.
So, the default budget number would be $4,848,607.
All right, so that's just MSDTB?
Yes.
Default.
So, this document needs to be posted with the warrant
Yes.
and the MS-737 by the 29th. The Budget Committee also needs this to put their recommendation on the actual warrant article to approve the operating budget, because it says, you know, "We recommend this number, and should it fail, then the default budget amount of $4,848,607 will be the budget in that event." So, this document will be presented for signatures Monday, the 22nd.
Okay.
But you have it in draft form in case you have any questions.
And then the Budget Committee will have it tomorrow night for the meeting.
Yes, yep. So, this was provided to them after the school portion of their public hearing last Thursday night, so they'll have it for tomorrow.
Oh, they had it all. The bird.
Oops, yeah.
Or should say, "We had it all." Bird hit the window.
Oh, that's bad luck.
Sun glare. The next document that I prepared is the Undesignated Fund Balance, which is also known as the surplus. This is a spreadsheet that Chris Sterndale had used formerly, just to kind of figure out where we're at, essentially with maybe additional revenues or appropriations that weren't spent that may be added into that fund. So, as of the tax rate, or as of the 12/31/22 financials, we had an unassigned fund balance of $2,498,661. Anticipated revenues for 2023 were $2,535,791. Actuals were $2,605,860. So, we actually received $70,069 more in revenue, so that will increase the unassigned fund balance by that amount. Our operating budget that was approved in 2023 was $4,853,66. Our actual expenses through 12/26 were $4,594,57. We estimate, Betsy and I did a quick estimate based on accounts payable that would be paid through to still hit the 2023 operating budget. We estimate about $115,000 is still going to be expended, and we approved $10,000 in encumbrance, and that was for the part-time maintenance salary line to be added into the efforts with the building maintenance repair. So, the difference to add to the fund balance for that would be $134,909. And then we have four days of 2024 payroll that hit the last bi-weekly pay period, so that's $43,400. That amount gets reduced. So, as of 1/124, we estimate the unassigned fund balance will be $2,660,239. So, that means that we have about $161,578 going back into that fund.
Which isn't a fund.
It's not a fund, no.
So, and this was confusion at the Budget Committee.
Correct.
Half of the people on the Budget Committee feel that that's money that's available, and it's not. They need an explanation
Yes.
on what that is.
So, the unassigned fund balance is exactly that. It's the revenues that we got in that we didn't count for, expenses that didn't get paid out, it's a compilation of your uncollected taxes, properties that are in lean status. Eventually, if all of the property taxes were paid on time, then it could potentially be money sitting in the bank, but this is just a reserve, the Department of... It's a number on the financial statements on the balance sheet that shows that if the town was solidified with everything that was due to it, then that would be money in the bank.
If we cleared the books?
Yes.
Yeah. Just interesting, because it was hard to explain.
It is available if we need it to offset expenses. Kind of.
You still have to look at the checking account balance, because that's what's available. That's what's available, not, "This is on paper if everything closed out today." But that is never gonna happen unless
Right.
Charter of the town.
So, the Department of Revenue recommends that we have between 5% and 17% of our operating expenses, and we have a target of 12%. When we set the tax rate, we're at 11.74%. That doesn't figure in. These amounts that we're estimating are gonna get added into that. So, with that being said, if you overall look at the 4% tax cap that's been implemented, the way the RSA reads, it says that the Budget Committee cannot recommend a budget that exceeds 4% over the amount to be raised by taxes from the prior year. So, you have to look at it as a whole, being the operating budget, which is the first warrant article, and then all the other warrant articles. And so, last year, the net required local tax effort was $3,346,792. That was the number that we calculated our tax rate off of. If we add up the operating budget and the warrant articles, as you've recommended them to this point, offset it by the estimated revenues, we're at $3,737,860. So, that's a difference of $150,298. So, technically, that is over the cap. What you could do is you have not offset anything from the unreserved fund balance. Last year, we funded a bunch of capital reserve accounts using the unreserved fund balance, so there would be no impact.
Not the undesignated fund balance, the unreserved?
That is the undesignated. Undesignated and unreserved are the same.
Okay.
So, that money does sit out there, it's just not in our checking account. It's in a fund.
Well, no, it's not in a fund.
It's on paper.
It's money that's constantly moving, you know, as people pay on their back taxes. That was the $200,000 that we funded the capital reserve account for last year. I think it might show on this video.
So, how would you?
So, I guess my thought process is your unreserved fund balance, your undesignated fund balance, or surplus, however you want to call it. That's a compilation of monies that have been added in over several years. I looked at it historically at one quarter of, I think, probably two years ago, we were around $1.45 million, so it has grown a little bit over the years. Actually, at a healthy percentage right now, according to the Department of Revenue recommendations. So, I guess my thought process is, is we're in deferred maintenance status on a lot of our town buildings. So, my recommendation would be, you know, in order to assist the Budget Committee in meeting the 4% tax cap that's in place, is maybe consider taking the $150,000 warrant article that we have to add into the building expendable trust fund, building maintenance fund, and funding that out of the unreserved fund balance, so there'll be no impact on tax base. And it would also help, but it's not quite enough, we're a little bit over that, so I mean, you could do that, you could take the other $50,000 warrant article that we have towards renovations in the back part of this building, possibly fund that or a portion of, you could possibly pay the road reconstruction, the subcontracted road reconstruction. That was, we could offset a little bit of that.
So, my thought on that one, when I was really thinking of coming in, the unreserved fund balance, was that we didn't spend $147,000 last year. We contracted it, and we're gonna cover this year from last year. So, we've appropriated appropriations in the warrant, the budget appropriations, total is 600, plus that is 747. Dawn had mentioned at one of our meetings, would, is it realistic that we could spend that even this year? So, do we just say, "Well, we're gonna use that 147 and drop the warrant article for road maintenance, contracted road maintenance by 147,000," and using what we didn't use last year and decrease that amount? It'll still gonna be $500,000, it's just not gonna be 147,000.
But I think that change can only be made at deliberative session at this point unless an extra public hearing is made, because the way that it was presented at the Budget Committee's public hearing, it was for the whole $500,000. So, that's the struggle that we're in, where we've now held a public hearing based on, you know, preliminary figures that you had worked on.
They don't wanna do that.
It didn't sound like it in Mike's emails yesterday.
Is there enough time?
They have to post it with seven days' notice, they have to have, no, I would say no, like, we would literally have to post it for, they would have to have a meeting next Wednesday, because they have to have their recommended budget to the selectmen by the 25th, which is next Thursday.
But they can't make changes to that from the public hearing?
They can. They can make changes tomorrow and then present another public hearing.
But that public hearing can't happen until the 24th, which is when it's due.
It's due the 25th. So, I mean, whatever comes out of today's meeting with us, we would have to pull the committee together and say, "Look, do you wanna hold another public hearing, because this is, you know, what we're proposing to help meet that 4% tax cap?" So, they could meet Wednesday night, and then have their public hearing Wednesday night, the 24th, and then have their recommended Have to get the notice posted. It would literally have to be something that happened.
But then you'd
Well, technically, you don't have to do anything more. It's the Budget Committee's recommended budget that has to meet the 4% tax cap. I'm trying to present an option that says, "Hey, you know, we understand that, you know, we're still off a little bit, so this is what we propose. If we fund this warrant article out of the fund balance, then it's not gonna be a tax impact."
But wouldn't there still be have to be a public hearing, because now that warrant article, we've already had the public hearing on those two warrant articles as well?
But the appropriation hasn't changed, not that your raising hasn't changed.
Just changing the tax implication.
It could be, because I guess the alternative would be that if, when they get to their bottom line and they're over the 4%, they'll have to not recommend certain things to I mean, we could put it right back in their hands. Well, we already have members in the public hearing before.
Run the whole thing with the, you have surplus.
The reserve fund balance, which is
So, if we use that to cover those two warrant articles?
Then it's, there's not going to be
No impact to the taxpayer. So, that would be a no-brainer to me. These are warrant articles that are detrimental to the infrastructure that we have, in my opinion, I mean, it sounds like a no-brainer, especially at a time where people are screaming about the tax rate. So, if this has no impact on that, this is, to me, it's a no-brainer.
It's an internal policy that you've set.
Yeah.
You don't need it to be huge either, that's just the way it's done.
What would you propose?
Warrant article that we're considering. I just figure, you know, if the unreserved fund balance is a buildup of accruals over time, we're looking at deferred maintenance that has happened over time. And, you know, do we take make those projects happen without an impact on the tax?
Is there anything we have to do?
It's gonna be a warrant article, right?
Yeah, so it'll be part of the warrant article, instead of it, I'm sorry, you don't have a clock with the warrant articles.
So, it'll just say, "Do you, you know, vote to approve whatever amount," and it'll say this will be
This amount to come from the unreserved fund balance, there'll be no impact?
That's when the Budget Committee
So, then on your MS-737, you're very Age 11.
So, for the, if we did the, you know, the building maintenance one, does the 298 kick us over? Does that 298 kick us over, or are we in a town?
I would say either do the 150 plus the 50, taking the $200,000 out of the undesignated funds. Absolutely.
All right, so we're at a level, target our town policy, try to stay around 12.
We're still gonna be, by doing that, we're probably still at 10%.
That's a dangerous road.
And the recommendation is eight to 12, I believe.
So, if we take, I'm okay with taking N of M, plus that one, that one, and so it's almost, you know, okay, but to just
So, then, you're still gonna be at 12%, because you're not taking anything out of it.
At 150, taking additional 50,000.
What's the harm in taking a little bit more out of it? I'm not saying you do it every year.
If you start the precedent, when you're not even, and then somebody says, "Well, this is a little bit, I was at the yard before, this is a little bit of a yard before."
But we always have.
Have a vote.
Are you sure of that?
Every year, I don't think, I don't know, there are times that I do remember.
So, essentially, we'd be taking last year's difference plus this year's difference, so we'd be back to where we were in 2020.
Correct.
Tim.
Taking that 150 out, what's it put us over to reach the 4% cap?
That's what I'm saying, our current overage is 150,000, 290,000, so that's like, find an extra $300 somewhere.
Well, no, I don't think we wanna touch the operating budget.
Oh, we're probably passing it on to a public hearing. Do we have the smaller? Do the Lake Advisory or the
Go away with the whole building and put it towards roads. You know, that's gonna be their recommendation.
But you can't break that warrant article off.
Yeah, we can't reduce the dollar amount.
Can't say 150, I don't think you can say 150 of this to come on reserve, and the rest be raised by taxes.
Very much.
Oh, so maybe that's the easier way to do it then? You get, you just reduce by 150,000, $300,000. It's $2 amongst friends. $500,000 road subcontracted
That's a stumbling block with the Budget Committee.
Yep. They don't want a warrant, they want a operating budget, reducing the rest of the operating budget by $200,000, it just doesn't seem feasible or advisable to the town.
And also, if you're taking a rather large warrant article, like the 500,000, their fear of having it not pass because of the price tag on it, and you reduce that a little bit, so you have less tax impact, that would probably lessen the blow a little bit.
I like that idea, Steve.
I mean, you got a chance of not getting that other 150 for the building maintenance, but
I think the people have heard, you know, the testimony from the Facilities Committee, obviously, what we're experiencing.
And I think, and last, was it last year, I think that was the first year, that the town had done a postcard mailer to kind of explain, all right, each of the
Was that the town, or the political parties out there that did that?
No, no, the town, I thought the town sent one out, I don't think it was from the political parties. I could've sworn the town sent something out.
Or maybe it was for the school.
No.
I think it was the political parties.
No, because it wasn't slanted, because it depends on which one it comes from, I know This one, I thought it was more, it was, it was just educational, and I'm 99%, 9% sure it came from the town.
Okay.
I know the town, I've seen the booklet that Chris used to put together, and then John carried it forward, you know, an explanation of each warrant article and the importance of it, I know that that, and I intend to carry that out, so I mean, we can get as much out there.
This was just like a one-page that was mailed out
Okay.
to all the taxpayers to explain from the town's behalf. But maybe I'm wrong, but Kelly might know.
Okay.
I think it's important.
Yeah, because
That they can make an informed decision based on
You have 200 people that show up to deliberative.
Right.
And it's to
3,000 people that show up to vote.
Right, and those other that didn't show up have no clue.
No, they've just seen the dollar amount and saying, "No."
They're looking at it on a piece of paper.
Or they're hearing the bias on like Facebook or something like that, so they're like, "Oh, this is bad, we don't want this," and it's like, "This is what we're..." So, if we can split it up, that sounds the most appropriate thing to do.
Lowers the tax impact for that warrant article.
Okay, so just, is that the consensus of the board, is to just focus on the $500,000 highway road reconstruction?
It'll make it look more manageable.
Okay.
And then they had questions too, I'm sure, about the tax, estimated tax impact for each of the warrant articles.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that didn't seem right, the dollar amount. They weren't sure what it was based upon.
Okay, so I can show them the calculation. Yeah, it's
Where it got messed up is there was one that was like $2,000, and it said it was only gonna raise the increase by a penny, and then there was another article that said it was $2,000, and it increased the tax rate by
12 cents or something like that.
12 cents or 3 cents, so
Okay, so I wonder
So, there was not a consistency there.
I wonder if that was just fat fingers at work.
I would, I would assume that.
I'll go back through and check the calculation, and I can provide them with the breakdown for each.
It's like, something's not right here. Same amount of money, different tax impact.
So, in the CIP for the police station relocation, there was a 40,000, which was originally next year, which we're pulling forward, and then there was, in three years, there was another, I don't know, it was 150,000, 250,000. Do you know what the breakdown of why that bigger amount was at, like, the initial, like, is the 40,000 the initial, just quick stuff, and then it's like, when we make a plan, then we go to that 250, and that's like, the engineering costs for
I would imagine.
Yes. Whenever a project comes up for consideration before the CIP, the department has to submit a worksheet that explains, you know, what they're looking for in what year, so we can pull together the information on that one in particular.
I was just curious, like, there's not a lot of breakdown on that, so it's like, because John's big thing about the 40,000 for the police department was to have something tangible, which the 40,000, if it's just kind of resurrecting old prints, which had some engineering basis to it, or whatever.
But did anybody put an eye on those old prints? And is there old prints, or is it all here?
That was the question.
Right.
I was told by more than one individual that there's prints over at the old fire station with the plans of a police station being added to it.
I think we need to put an eye on it.
Yeah, because if there are prints, and this is my point to the Budget Committee a couple of weeks ago, number one, they were, what, it's 12, they're 12 years old.
Yeah, so they need to be updated either way.
And I highly doubt it was like a full engineering design.
Right.
No, it was probably just, this is a proposed
This is, exactly, this is what it could look like, and this is the potential size and footprint, but as far as engineering goes, there's no way. I really don't believe that anybody did that without saying there's a timeline for the project to be completed. I think it was more theoretical than anything else, but
So, that was the whole comment, as has anybody laid eyes on it.
Right.
You're talking that this is actually there, is it actually there? So, I think, they'll sit down and over and figure it out.
Okay, I can do that.
Well, all the plans are there, they really shouldn't be over there anyway, they should be here.
I don't know if here is any better. I don't know if here is any better. You toss it to
If and when we seal up back and we have an office space, a storage place back there.
The other thing that I just wanted to address with you, Dawn had emailed yesterday, or maybe it was Monday, so in the event that we have to postpone deliberative session due to inclement weather, we technically had a tentative date scheduled for the 10th, which is the following Saturday, but per the RSA, she has to, if she postpones, she has to hold the meeting within 72 hours, so she wants me to reach out to the school and see if maybe like Sunday evening or Monday evening are viable options, so I just wanted to keep you aware of that.
Saturday, just try to move it to the next.
Either the following day, Sunday, or Monday evening after school.
Why is that again?
The RSA says that it has, if it's been postponed, that it has to be held within 72 hours of the original planned date.
So, why did we originally say a week?
Because the way that we read it on the calendar, it says the first day for your deliberative session is the third, your last day is the 10th, so we just figured it was within the perimeter.
It's always been scheduled seven days later, as far as the, same thing with
Inclement weather, and that's what I did, I followed suit from the prior year.
Interesting.
So, I will, I'll look into that.
Good news is, it looks like it's gonna be 45 degrees for the next week too, so.
Yeah, the school only has one snow day built into their entire, so I don't know if they'd be willing to take any hit for a day off from school for
Well, it wouldn't be a day off from school, we'd do it Sunday evening or Monday evening.
Yeah, but usually deliberative goes for a long time.
Last year, it was only three and a half hours.
Okay.
We actually, the year before, the first time we did deliberative, people thought it was like town meeting, and it went for five and a half hours and six hours, and people, and the moderator kept saying, "This is not, you can't do this here, this is the deliberative, and, you know, you're not voting."
It was all new.
It was, it was all new. Last year, I think it went a little bit more quickly, so, but I don't think, you, we can't do it on a Monday.
No.
Anyway, even if you cancel, like, people aren't gonna show up.
Well, surprisingly, but schools still does it on an evening.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's right, we do it. Okay.
All right. Um, what else do I have for you?
Oh, quickly, there was mention abroad that, about the funding of the newsletter. It's a budget item.
Mm-hmm.
There was somebody that said unfunding it is, it was, it originally got funded by a warrant article, but I believe the warrant article said, it didn't have any words about classing.
But we didn't unfund it.
No, all we did, we just reduced the line item.
Just making sure that we're addressing verbally the concerns that were posted online.
Okay.
But again...
I did, I did receive an email from somebody that, that stated the importance of the newsletter, and, um, I haven't responded because I was out of the office yesterday. But I think they, I, and I think Charlotte Fife did a very good presentation at one of the Budget Committee meetings, where she said, you know, we're, we're trying to figure out how we're going to make this work, because we understand that the cost of the printing and the mailing is probably not sustainable. So they were looking at alternatives to maybe get one newsletter out there and then digitize the rest.
All right, it was all the mail, and I think the printing was donated, and mailing's what costs us money.
And there is revenue that comes in offset. And right now, the way, the amount that it's been reduced, the line item has been reduced by, it, it almost becomes a wash based on the advertising revenue that comes in, but whether or not it's sufficient to do the quarterly publications.
I think the advertising revenue last year was like 1,800, but they're increasing the price this year.
Right.
So we, we reduced it to 4,000.
I agree.
No, I'm, yeah, I'm just saying.
So their recommendation was to put out the newsletter, let people know if they really needed a printed copy, to notify them, we'll send them a printed copy, the ones that were happy with not receiving it, instead of going the other way around.
Right. So the, so the newsletter is not, there's no plan to eliminate it.
Correct.
Reducing number of...
Record about that?
We are not eliminating the newsletter, we have reduced the funding of it based off input from somebody on the newsletter. It might be, it's not bi-weekly printed as it used to be, or as printed in the online article.
Bi-monthly, not bi-weekly.
Bi-monthly. It's not bi-monthly, right? It's now quarterly, or is it?
Yes.
Yeah, it's quarterly.
It's already been reduced to quarterly anyway by the Newsletter Committee. So, just getting some facts out there.
But, they can increase it at deliberative too.
Yep.
That's their choice, somebody wants to come up and make the recommendation to refund to the full amount.
But it has not been defunded.
It has not been defunded.
Or eliminated. Anything else we have to cover?
So as of right now, you're meeting on the 22nd for your regular meeting. We will have the default budget, and we'll have the default budget ready for you to sign. Hopefully, we'll have a recap from how the Budget Committee meeting tomorrow goes.
And when do we put our recommendation on the budget?
Your recommendation has already been made. You did that at last meeting.
With the regular budget? Okay, I thought we were waiting until they made their, they had another chance to make changes, and we were waiting to make sure. Should we approve the budget?
So I just need their recommendations, they'll have to get their, their recommendations to me. And then the MS-737 is produced with their figures on it. Um, and that has to be posted on the 29th, which is a week from Monday, along with the town board and the default budget. So I will need people to come in and sign that.
They can't change any numbers, you're saying, unless they hold a public hearing?
Correct. But they do have to give me the recommendations, they have not made any yet.
Okay.
So that's what I'm waiting on. Potentially, like I said, they could go through and just not recommend certain aspects. And then they won't have to worry about meeting, you know, if, if they, if they not recommend a couple of the warrant articles, then they'll be within the tax cap anyways. Um, so, yeah, so we'll have to have this posted Monday, the 29th, per statute. We'll make sure that that gets done. Deliberative session, February 3rd. Um, I do have Nettie pulling together a quote to do, um, the recording. As of right now, we do not have the money in the budget, we did not have the money in the budget. Last year, it cost us $5,000 to live broadcast the deliberative session. Um, I know it's a great convenience for people to see what's going on, but realistically, if they're not there in attendance, they can't do anything. So, um, I have him pulling together a quote. Our other alternatives that I'm looking at is just setting up a regular Zoom meeting so people can view it there. But I, I just, I, I don't see, especially with this, this tax cap in play, and every other impact that's been...
Who's the school used to record?
Ned, uh, Nettie.
Oh, it is the same company, okay.
So the school, I didn't believe that the school was going to be recording theirs, but I got an email this morning that states that they are.
They're recording it, not live?
Not, no, they're, they're actually having them do alive.
Oh, okay.
So I know we're kind of behind the A-ball at this point, but we'll see what we have available for options that are going to be cost-effective. If not, then it could just be a laptop in the back of the room zooming it. We'll see how it goes. Um, and then, as far as alternative dates, if it does end up being an inclement weather day and we have to postpone, I'll reach out to the school and see what they have availability.
Think Sunday would be the optimal day.
That Monday is...
That would be the first Monday, so we'd have a meeting.
Correct.
And then just a reminder, next Tuesday is the primary election, so we have a meeting Monday night. We'll be looking for volunteer efforts to help set up everything up at the school on Monday afternoon. Hopefully, the weather will be good, so we'll have assistance from the Highway Department. We have a whole lot of...
What time do they get to start? Is there good after-school care there?
Yeah, as soon as school adjourns, they'll be ready. Because after school, um, aftercare is in the cafeteria, so we'll be setting up in the gymnasium.
Okay.
So I think Kevin had told me anytime after 3:00.
Okay. And then we have CIP at 5:15?
Correct. Do you have anything else? This is all I needed to accomplish in time for tomorrow, so, thank you for...
We don't have anything with non-public, right?
No, non-public.
I'll make a motion to adjourn that.
Oh, so good.
Motion made by Tim DaBrio, seconded by Matt Herlen-Rochel.
Hi, Steve Welch.
I've been Bartlet.
Hi, Tim DaBrio.
Hi, Matt Herlen.
All right. This concludes our, uh, board meeting, thanking Nottingham for those who are watching.